Board of County Commissioners zoning hearing. It's Thursday, June 23rd, 2022. I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Commissioner Sacks.
Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks is on her way. Commissioner Moreno is out on county business.
Moreno's right here.
Commissioner, you are here, Commissioner McKinley. I seem to have that problem with you, Commissioner Moreno. Anyway, Commissioner Moreno, with respect to you being here, I would love to have you do our opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
Thank you. And if you'd all bow your heads with me, let us pray silently together, each one of us according to our beliefs. Let us offer thanks for the blessing of fellowship around us. Let us be a source of hope for those in need. Let the feelings of love, kindness, and a well-directed yet gentle spirit always be reflected in our actions. And as my mom always says, let us leave the world a better place than we found it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will take your mother's, your advice to heart. All right, did we have notice?
Yes.
Okay. Proof of publication?
Yes.
All right.
Motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. I'll take your motion. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved five to zero. Okay, can we have swearing in, allow her?
All those wishing to testify or speak on any of today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Do.
Thank you.
Okay, I see we have a few amendments to the agenda, so let's go through them.
Okay, we have item number five, DOA CA 2021-1576, Melrose PUD. The applicant requested to postpone to July 28th. Their request is found in the attachment A on the backup material. So the motion would be to postpone to July 28th. Item number 10, Kid Sanctuary Campus Transfers a Place of Hope. The applicant requested a postponement to July 12th, the regular BCC hearing. And their information is found in the backup on attachment B. No motion will be required on that. On the consent agenda, item number two, we have a deletion of a previous condition for environmental condition number two and as well as a deletion of an all petition condition number two and exhibit C3. On the regular agenda, we've included figure eight, which regards to the planning letter of determination for workforce housing. That's labeled as attachment C in the backup. And then on the add delete, delete parks condition number one.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved five to zero. Let's move on to the postponement that's being requested on item five. That's the applicant's request for postponement to July 28th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor. Do I have a second by Commissioner Bernard? All in favor, all opposed. That is approved to be postponed to July 28th by five to zero. All right, so now we have postponed by right the next item. So let me just see where that leaves us.
Yeah, so item number one, that Terra Nova, DOA 2021-1954, requires no motion, as well as item number 10, Kid Sanctuary, requires no motion. That would bring me to the consent agenda.
All right, we're looking around for comment cards. I see, I see. Item two, consent agenda, right?
Yes, there's only one item on the consent, which is the PGA Waterfront. So I don't know if there's any requests to pull that item from consent.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion, but we're gonna do disclosures and then we'll see if we have any comment cards.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, unfortunately, there were comment cards on item five, which I think may have been voted on already.
We did, but we will accept since if they are here, we will certainly hear them, understanding that while we did approve the postponement, we certainly could reconsider our vote if there is a purpose of doing that. So why don't we call up whoever has put their comment cards in?
Very good. This is on agenda item five, Patricia Trow. And then we'll have LaVice Foreman. Is Patricia or Foreman here?
Now, I'm gonna ask you not to speak subject, on the subject matter, but only on what's before us now, which is the request for postponement. And please come forward. And you will have three minutes, and I'm gonna ask you to, again, identify yourself for the record.
My name is Patricia Trow, and I'm from Melrose Park. I'm a little bit disappointed with this postponement, but I certainly agree if it gives us more time to come together with the residents and the applicant, then so be it. I would just like to state that I hope the next four weeks will not be a repetition of the past week's talk and take a similar stance. I have attended and been asked repeatedly for my concerns, both verbally and in writing, but have received no constructive replies back from the applicant. And that is applicable to the drive-through and all the issues that we see. I would like to say that the applicant seems to be focused on issues which I believe are basically his obligation and responsibility, like drainage, flooding, landscaping, and the effects on the near neighbors, near the plaza. All these basically existed at the start of the development and should be resolved as should and not be taken as a bargaining tool to gain our written drive-through approval. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and I hope that the applicant heard your remarks and will take them into account as they go forward. Is there anybody else with respect to item one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we now have Mr. Foreman. And then after Mr. Foreman, we'll have Hector Lachon.
Mr. Foreman, again, two minutes, three minutes, but only on the item as being postponed or not.
I understand. My name's Lance Foreman, and as to the motion, I have no objection to it, obviously. The matter, I understand, is postponed to July 28th, 2022. Hopefully, it's enough time to see if we are able to resolve the matter.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Following Hector, we'll have Monica Benedict.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Hector Lachon. I'm here on behalf of Melrose Park homeowners. I am the president of the homeowners association. We are a community of about 132 homes. We will support the postponement of the item. We have had a number of conversations with the developer for about 18 months now. We hope we can come to some sort of agreement on this large change that was the introduction of a drive-through. So depending on the outcome of those conversations, hopefully by next month, we will have some sort of agreement. So we look forward to working with them, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you very much, and I apologize to everybody who made the trip up here today because this postponement, again, was not, was not requested within the...
No, we understand, and we are actually grateful for it. You know, the developer has definitely expressed willingness to work with us, but we have not yet seen any concrete results. So we hope we will.
Thank you very much. We appreciate those comments.
Following Ms. Benedict, we'll have Glenn Holcomb, and then... Is there Mr. or Mrs. Trow here? T-R-O-W? And then, so you'll be following Ms. Benedict and Mr. Holcomb.
Ms. Benedict, again, three minutes on to the motion to postpone.
Good morning, Monica Benedict. It's nice to see all of you. I am happy to be here. The petition against this project is over 500 people that signed now in our neighborhood. This is the new signatures. I'd like to give it to you if you want to receive. I don't know if I can...
Okay, we will receive and file.
It's very nice of you to listen to us. It's good to be postponed, but we should have done that today because they had plenty of time to work with us. They just did that at the last minute. They start talking to us. So it would be good for them to start talking to us now and get this done and not do so 10 days before the meeting because a lot of people go out of work to come here. And I know for you guys, this is work, and it's a beautiful work you do here, and I'm proud of you. But for a lot of that sitting over there that wish to be here, it's workday. So maybe next time, if you ask the contractor to really work with us now, not 10 days before, not 15 days before. And I would like to bless you all and say that I'm happy to be here and happy that you are commissioners, working behalf of our families, work to protect Palm Beach County, to protect our families, to protect the peace, right? Because this builder, he want to put a bar in our back yards. And imagine these people, drunk people, coming out of the neighborhood, sharing the same intersection with us. Bars are okay for those who like, but not inside of our homes, not inside of our development. And I would like you to look close to our project and protect us because we depend on you, and I'm glad we have you guys. Love you all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Well, following Mr. Holcomb, we'll have, that will be the last public speaker, and I apologize to the Trows, that's a non-speaking card. They do not want the drive-in mall.
Okay, we'll receive and file those.
Glenn Holcomb, Melrose Park resident. Just wanna say I agree with the postponement. However, I do not agree with the project of the drive-through. Thank you.
Thank you very much again. And again, not withstand the fact that you've all been very agreeable. I'm sorry you had to make the trip up here today, and certainly, we appreciate you accepting the fact that we need a little more time on this one. So the vote was already taken, which was five to zero. Commissioner Sacks was not present at the time of the vote. I will just see no motions for reconsideration. We'll move on to the next item. All right, that takes us to... Was there any, anything on the Kid Sanctuary?
We just have to do the disclosure on the consent.
Very good. Just keep me on the straight and narrow here, Commissioner. Commissioner Sacks, how are you today, and how is Israel?
It was amazing, amazing country. I got in late yesterday, and it kinda caught off with me this morning, the jet lag. But I am present and ready to get to work.
All right, well, a quarter to 10 for us. I'm sure it's a little earlier for you, so why don't you do the consent agenda? Or it's a little later for you.
With regard to consent agenda on item number two, we've received and filed emails for the PGA Waterfront Residential PUD.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks, and welcome back. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to item two, PGA Waterfront Residential PUD, no verbal communications, receive correspondence. I will be followed with the clerk.
Very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On item two, only on the consent agenda, I spoke with Dan Catalfumo, and my staff spoke with Marty Perry, and we received correspondence.
Very good. Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. On item two, I had received emails from residents and project information from the applicant, and I also had in-person and verbal communications with Joey Eichner and Dan Catalfumo.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
My staff had verbal communications with Marty Perry, and we received email correspondence in my office.
Thank you. And I also had verbal communications with Mr. Catalfumo, with Mr. Perry, Attorney Perry, and we have various correspondence, which are, of course, a matter of record. Okay, we have our disclosures out of the way. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You already had a motion.
I had a motion by...
Commissioner Moreno.
Oh.
You know, that one that's over here.
That one?
That, this Maria that's over here.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, the other Maria. Okay, so Maria Sacks has, Commissioner Sacks has seconded the consent agenda. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is being approved six to zero. All right, we're now moving on to the regular agenda, which is now item three. It's time for staff to do some work.
Yes, item number three is SCA 202212, which is the Encompass Health of Lake Worth. This runs concurrently with item number four. The first request is for a small-scale amendment to modify the land use from low institutional LR2 to institutional with underlying 2. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Lodge for presentation, if you so choose.
The applicant typically would go first.
I was gonna ask if the applicant should go first. Yeah? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, thank you. George Gentile, president of 2GHO Inc. We're here this morning representing Encompass Health Rehabilitation Facility. We're excited to work with them. This'll be one of their first projects in Palm Beach County. They are a very large medical facility and operation that does rehabilitation facilities throughout the country. They have a number in Florida. The closest one is in Stewart, and we're glad to have them here in Palm Beach County. Their average patient is 70 years old, and so you have people who come in here to this facility for the last two weeks before they're able to go home after stroke, orthopedic, neurological, heart attacks, and those type of things. It's a great facility and is recommended by a lot of the hospitals that are here. I know Palm Beach Gardens sends a lot of their patients. Have some of their executives here today. We're glad they came in from Alabama just for this meeting. So let me go very quickly. The first item, this project is 8.21 acres on Lantana Road, north side, about a quarter of a mile east of State Road 7, right across from the Bellagio development. I do wanna say that on a transparency basis, this company started outright. They met with all the residents. You have a letter from Bellagio recommending approval. We even met with, discussed it with Cobra, which is, this is just outside of their area. They also sent you a letter of recommendation. So right now, we have existing land uses on both parcels. There's two properties here. One is a nursery and recycling operation, and the other one is a single-family home. They are lower-density residential land use, and we're asking to change both of those to institutional for the hospital use to be on the property. These are the maps. This is the location. And so we would change the zoning also, which you're gonna be hearing about. I'm gonna go ahead and do just the quick presentation so I won't have to talk about the conditional use. But we're also asking for the zoning to be changed from AR on both parcels to IPF, which is your institutional and public facility, so the hospital can be appropriately done on the subject property. I just went over this. We are asking for conditional use A also. We had a, for the hospital facility. And we've had a unanimous recommendation from the Eldrab on the land use change, and also unanimous from the zoning commission. So I'll end it there and answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. We have one question. Commissioner Moreno?
Not a question, but just for those in the audience who don't know, I'd like to congratulate George on winning the Ed Tancer Community Service Award from the Palm Beach North Chamber, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay, seeing no questions. Staff, do you wanna follow up with any comments?
Hello. Good morning. Jerry Lodge, the Planning Division. There we go. The small-scale future land use amendment before you today is Encompass Health of Lake Worth. The subject site is about 8.21 acres. It's in the urban suburban tier. It's located on the north side of State Road 7, about a quarter mile east of, or the north side of Lantana Road, about a quarter mile east of State Road 7. The applicant's proposing to change the future land use from low residential to units per acre to institutional and an underlying two units per acre. The concurrent zoning application's requesting hospital use to rezone from AR to IPF and for an 80-bed hospital with about 76,000 square feet, which will be a one-story building and constructed in two separate phases. Here is the site outlined in red. Currently, it's two parcels. The eastern parcel is a single-family home. The western parcel has approvals for and operates as a nursery and chipping and mulching facility. The current future land use of the site is LR2, as well as the northeast and south of the site. On the south is Bellagio, a 553-acre community with about 1,099 homes. North and east of the site is county and, is vacant land owned by Palm Beach County and the Solid Waste Authority. Currently, it's vacant, but it's identified in the comprehensive plan to be a future district park, which is not being developed now, but it will be a park at some point. The proposed hospital will utilize the existing traffic light on the Lantana entrance to Bellagio as well. So there's the park future land use designation for the vacant land currently. Further east is the Park Ridge Golf Course, which is operated by Palm Beach County as well. West of the site is the Mission Lakes MUPD with a commercial low future land use with an underlying two units per acre. The site is proposing cross-access to the commercial low future land use on the western side of the site. This is a commercial node at the northeast corner of Lantana Road and State Road 7. It's anchored by a Target retail store about 186,000 square foot, which is also the closest use to the site. And further across, State Road 7 are more commercial low future land use designations, as well as industrial. Staff reviewed the amendment and found that the site is compatible with its surrounding uses. It's located on an urban minor road, and it's consistent with the general character of the corridor. This staff also concludes that the proposed hospital provides a transition between the commercial uses to the west and residential and park uses to the southeast and north. Staff also finds this application consistent with the comprehensive plan. During public notification process, staff sent out 500-foot notices. We also sent interested party letters to Bellagio, Country Cove Estates, and Thoroughbred Lakes. We also held an informational meeting on May 2nd. No members of the public attended that. Staff recommends approval of the flu amendment. And on May 13th, Planning Commission also recommended approval, nine to zero. And the motion before you today is to adopt an ordinance.
Very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to agenda item three, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance, and then following our disclosure, I'll have motions on agenda item four.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that that has been approved. The ordinance has been approved by a six-to-o margin. Let's do our disclosures now so we can move on to item four, which is the concurrent application. Commissioner Sacks, why don't we hit you first?
None.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On agenda item three and four, I had verbal communication with Sharon Merchant, Cheryl Scott, possibly George Gentile. And then my staff spoke with Barbara Roth, and no correspondence.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno?
None, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I'm offended. Nobody came and talked to me about this at all. Nobody wrote me letters. Nobody said anything to me. Got no disclosures. All right, I'm going to accept the motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Show that is approved, six to zero. That's item four, and we are ready to... You're looking at me like something just flew by. Okay, good. Yes. We just did our vote on four.
On three.
Did we just do three or four?
We did three, and I have a motion on four, unless you wanna...
You just did three. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. Commissioner Kerner just, you know, whet my appetite to get right into four.
Well, that's why I'm here, Mayor. I'm delighted to be of assistance. Unless anyone, I think zoning was covered in the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so with respect to item four, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as published, and then also make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Class A conditional use.
And to allow the hospital subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in exhibit C2.
Yes.
I have a second by the Vice Mayor to the Commissioner's motion. I will now call the vote. All in favor, all opposed. Show that one is also approved six to zero. My clerk is so happy that I cleaned that up. She goes upstairs, and she says, "I don't understand what he's doing there."
Downstairs.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Yes, so that'll bring us to page eight, as number five was postponed. So item number six on page eight is the 2021-2038 Elizabeth Street at Square Lake. There's 13 pages in the staff report, conditions found on pages five. Staff is recommending approval of the request. Zoning Commission recommended approval as well. And I can turn it over to the applicant for a presentation.
Oh, thank you. Good morning, thank you. My name is Neil Hannan. I'm the property owner at 8295 South Elizabeth Avenue, and I'm here to present an application for rezoning. Also, I'd like to submit eight letters of signed letters from neighbors in support of this application. And we have a ninth one that just came in during this. If that's okay, would you receive those?
We'll receive and file them.
Thank you. So this is the overview of the site. It's North Lake Boulevard and Military Trail in the heart of Palm Beach Gardens. The community's called Square Lake, and the site is in that community. There's a site on Elizabeth Street right there. The request is, my site is 2.36 acres and requesting to rezone it from residential states to residential transition. This is consistent with the low residential one future land use. We want to subdivide into two lots subsequent to application process. 1.32 acres for one of the lots and 1.04 acre for the second lot. This was found both by the Planning and Rezoning Board, and staff have recommended approval because the application is consistent with the plan and consistent with the code. The residential state district is to provide transition between agricultural and conservation areas in more urban residential communities and to create a residential environment. RT is to provide a transition between a single-family atmosphere and a state development, which promotes active recreational facilities within a privacy, in the privacy of an individual lot. Given the development of the neighborhood and the trends of decreased agricultural uses in that area, as you can see, it was in the heart of Palm Beach Gardens, and the neighborhood transitioning more as a suburban neighborhood, the RT zoning district is more appropriate. This is the original plat and the consistent plat from 1951. This is the current plat above, and then the bottom is how it stands today. As you can see, there's a lot of differences in lots that have been subdivided a lot smaller, even 0.6 acre. We're requesting both lots will be over an acre. The adjacent RT zone properties, as you can see, these are the sites within this community that have already been rezoned to RT from RE. And one that just recently was rezoned, I believe it was in November, December, and approved. Again, this is consistent with the code, consistency with the plan. It's compatible with the surrounding uses, the effect on the natural environment, and development pattern. There's adequate public facilities and changing in the conditions and circumstances. As you've seen, there's eight letters there, but I've got nine actually signed, and I can get more. I think up to six more have already approved, have supported this. But yeah, these are neighbors and their addresses that support this application. And again, this was found by the Planning and Rezoning Board and staff to be recommended because it's consistent with the plan and consistent with code. Thank you very much.
Staff?
Do you like a presentation from staff? I understand there's no cards. We had opposition at zoning commission. We are in support of the application to rezone it.
Okay. We'll take our public comment, and then we'll see if anybody...
I don't think we need a present, a repeat presentation.
Okay, we're going to hold off on the presentation.
Okay.
Is, are you Neil, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we have no common cards.
No common cards. All right. District 1, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Marino.
I should say to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if I'm overstepping. Did you do disclosures?
No, not yet.
We have to do our disclosures. Commissioner Marino, would you do your disclosure first?
Thank you. I had emails from residents and the District 1... Pardon me. The District 1 staff has spoken with a resident also.
Very good. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On Item 6, no verbal communication, did receive correspondence.
Very good. Commissioner Bernard?
Mr. Mayor, on Item 6, no verbal communication, but received correspondence.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding to Item 6, I have received and filed emails. Other than that, there's been no verbal communication.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
I received emails and had no verbal communication.
And like everybody else up here, I have some correspondence, which are in my regular record. I have no verbal communication. Now, I'm going to accept the motion by Commissioner Marino to approve. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sacks, just to confuse me a little bit. So I have Commissioner Marino and Commissioner Marino. All in favor? All opposed? I'm getting you a name tag. Too long. The vote was six to zero. Thank you. It's approved. We're just a collegial bunch up here. All right. I guess we're going to have some discussion about this next one.
Yes. Item Number 7 is CA 2020-2103, which is the Evergreen Townhouse. The 25 pages in the staff report, conditions are found on Pages 8 through 11, as well as on our add delete. Staff is recommending approval subject to conditions in Exhibit C-1 and C-2. Zoning Commission recommended approval. And I'll turn it over to the applicant to do a presentation, followed by staff.
Okay. I'm assuming we have a bunch of cards?
We have six cards.
Six cards. All right.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present Evergreen Townhouse. My name is Dave Prasad, and I'm representing the owner, Evergreen LLC. I'd like to give you a brief presentation this morning and to answer any questions and to give you also reasons why we think this project should be approved. Okay. Today, we are requesting Condition A, use to allow more than 24 units in an RM zoning district. We are also requesting a second Condition A, use to allow more than 50% of workforce housing in a standard zoning district. As you are aware, workforce housing is a mandatory component in any development. This is to give you an idea of where the site is located. The site is off Military Trail and directly on Old Military Trail, which comes to a dead end on the north side, which is a shopping center, small shopping center. To the east of that property, we have some townhomes, I think a single-family. And if you go a little farther towards Military Trail, they are small mom-and-pop commercial locations. To the west of this property, it's called, these are rental units. I think it's called Tennis Tower or something of that sort. And the surrounding to the south are private homes. Also, some of the lands, they are zone residential multifamily. Some are developed, some are not developed, but they are residents in there. I'll give you a quick overview of what the property is. It's a 4.52 acres. MR5 is the full unit. It's zoned RM multifamily. It is, resides in a CCRT neighborhood, Old Military Trail. So it's ready for redevelopment, so to speak. The site is presently vacant. The property owner is proposing 40 units, multifamily units, which results in a density of 8.83 units per acre. And with that mandatory workforce housing, we will be having eight units. This is a site plan that is approved by staff, Palm Beach County staff, that represents the unit. It's kind of a little difficult to see where the units are, but my next slide will show you the distribution of these units. We have met all the staff recommendations with regards to recreation, which regards to vegetation, which regards to parking, and egress, egress to the site, which is only one egress and egress designated to the site, which is Military, Old Military Trail to Military Trail. This is the layout, an overview of the layout of this project. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 units there. These are, again, there's the townhouses. That's how it's distributed. As you can notice, to the east side of the property, we have our drainage areas, our retentions. To the west side, which is next to the tennis tower, we have recreation area for the children. We also have parking distributed around the property and within the townhouse itself. So it's a well-balanced development, well-balanced site development. We did went in front of the subdivision variance because obviously we had the substandard Orlando Road, which has to be improved. And we presented based on recommendation from Palm Beach County staff. At that time, we did invite the community to speak on behalf of it. The subdivision variance was approved with conditions, and these are the conditions. We must improve Old Military Trail, which is need improvement. And we also must improve Orlando, which needs to be widened and paved to meet the standards so that the project can be viable. I would like to close by making a few comments. We, with regards to the community and some of the outreach we have made and some of the concessions we have done in order to make sure that this project is, everyone is aware of what we are trying to do. We have collaborated with Palm Beach County Community Revitalization. Unfortunately, due to the circumstances at the time, we had to do a virtual meeting. And within that virtual meeting, we had over 10 people who had, were on the virtual meeting. Thanks to Community Revitalization Department of Palm Beach County, we had a successful discussion. One of the main topics of discussion was traffic. Traffic is the main discussion, and you probably, from your experience, understand that it is always a major discussion. Recently, about two weeks or three weeks ago, if I got my time properly, we also have, excuse me, I told I had this phone off. I didn't. We had a meeting with the community again. It was a healthy discussion, and we discussed similar situations. Again, the concern, one of the major concern was traffic. Secondly, in terms of the density of how many units we're placing. We do understand the concern of the community. We are working within the standards of Palm Beach County to meet all requirements, and those requirements have been met for development. We tried our best within the confines. We have not requested any TDRs. We are only doing workforce housing, and that is a mandatory requirement from Palm Beach County. No TDRs. We pulled it off, and we... As I say before, the zoning commission has approved our subdivision variance for access to this property. Traffic has reviewed this development, and traffic has determined it meets the standards for development for the amount of units we are placing there. We also had approval through the zoning commission meeting, which was previously coming to you, and they have approved this project. Lastly, we believe that this project will enhance that neighborhood. Obviously, it's a vacant piece of property, and with vacant piece of property, we have blights, we have vacancies, et cetera, et cetera. So we are requesting today your approval so we can build something on that project that would assist the needs of housing. And I must say that the neighborhood, where we have this level of housing, although these houses may not be all designated workforce housing, that's the target market because of the surrounding neighborhood. So basically, the county is getting with, although it's not designated, they are getting 40 workforce housing, which is a necessity in our present Palm Beach County. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And of course, you won't get any argument from us as far as the necessity for workforce housing. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Ms. Prasad? I have some questions. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure speaking with you.
So one of my concerns has, and, you know, you're talking about traffic and the impact in that neighborhood. And you and I had a phone conversation. Did you, have you spoken to any of the surrounding properties about access, cross-access?
Yes, sir. No, we have not spoke with cross-access. I didn't get that part of it. Now, here is a reason, there is a reason for us not to do so.
To not speak to them?
No, not to pursue that option. For, because on the north side, which there is an easement to Military Trail inside of a commercial property, that's a private property. And there is no, there is no rights for such neighborhood to give us, to put our traffic in their neighborhood. Secondly, if we looked at the western side of the property, it is a private rental apartment also. We feel that if we have a designated access coming from, and that designation really derives from the county planning, to get to Military Trail, there are actually two accesses to get to Military Trail. We feel that the private development would not want to have traffic in their private community. So to speak with them on putting our traffic in a private community, we feel it would be a long, lengthy discussion of years of trying to convince them to do so. And also, if we try to do an eminent, and you cannot do an eminent in a private. So it will be probably working towards a dead end.
So, so I take that answer to mean that you never approached any...
We did not approve the two possibility of access for egress, egress on this property.
Even though they have access, direct access to one to community and the other one to Military Trail?
The commercial has access through their parking lot to Military Trail, and I think that...
The tennis club has...
Tennis club has it through their community to community drive, to their development, to community drive, yes.
All right. All right. And then, have you all done any analysis on the, on the, I know there are conditions on improving the roadways? Have you all done a financial analysis on what those are?
To...
For the requirement for...
Present egress, egress, that's there.
No, no. For the improvements to Orlando and Old Military Trail.
Yes, we have done, and we accepted the conditions, the two conditions.
I understand. I just wondered if you had done a financial analysis?
We have not done a financial analysis, but our engineer, who probably have some answers what it may cost to do it. But like I say, we are willing to improve Orlando based on the conditions we're giving to us and Old Military Trail also in front of the prop, our property.
All right. So I did, I did a little research into it and saw the low-end expectation would be at least $1 million and $6.
The owner is prepared because these are the condition, and we have accepted the conditions. All right? Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion on the dais, let's take the public comment. Staff, do you want to make your comments, specifically on traffic? I guess that's where we're really hung up at this point. So why don't we just stay focused on traffic?
I can turn it over to Quasi then to answer any, do some comments on the traffic.
So this is a 40... This is a 40-unit multifamily residential development. It generates approximately 18 pickup trips, which is considered in our standards. So out of those 18, in the morning, 14 cars will come out of that property, and four will get in. So it's not, the number-wise, actually, the traffic is not that high from this development. Most likely, the concern is regarding the condition of the road itself. And they have already gotten conditions to improve that road, as you just heard.
On the question of cross-access, would that increase or decrease their traffic impact of this particular community? I mean, obviously, cross-access means the other community has the ability to go through them to get out the other way. Would that, would there be a balance? Would there, would there be a reduction if there was potentially cross-access?
The 40-unit residential development will generate the same number of trips, but the trips most likely will be distributed. If they have only the cross-access and no access on Old Military Trail, then all their traffic will be going through just one access and not entering this neighborhood at all. But if they have two access points, including that cross-access to the property to the west, then their traffic impact on the neighborhood will be reduced because the traffic will now be distributed at two entrances.
But how many units are in that western development there? I mean, I'm assuming some people in that development might cut through the new development.
They may, correct. They may.
Okay. I'm, I'm not getting a real answer. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Couple things for staff. CCRT neighborhoods, are they targeted for redevelopment specifically?
For revitalization. We have Ruth Mogulinski here and Houston that could speak about the CCRT areas.
Good morning. No, this is CCRT.
Come to a microphone.
Good morning, Ruth Mogulinski with the OCR. No, the CCRT or county-wide community revitalization areas are not areas that are targeted for revitalization. These are areas in need of assistance, and our, the efforts of our office is to focus on improving these communities and improving the quality of life with, for the residents.
All right. So thank you. Going back to the, the conditions on the, on the roadway. I've been out to the site, I assume. Have you all been out to the site?
Good morning. Olive Bailey with Land Development. I haven't been out there. I did do a Google Drive through there, and yes, the, the roads aren't meeting our current standards, so they will have to be improved.
Right. So right now, the road, the roadways are very narrow. I have a picture. I was out there, and there was a UPS truck going down the road, and literally no other vehicle could be on that road at the same time.
Yeah. It looks like it's a one-lane road right now, and we'd require them to meet our local standards. So two 10-foot lanes along with them being required on Orlando and Old Military to build the full section, and on Old Military to provide a sidewalk. So right now, it doesn't, it is narrow. They do have some of the ride-of-way, but they still need to build the two 10-foot lanes, the drainage.
So the drainage right now is their, their culverts, some of them quite, quite deep on each side of the roadway. So is... So, is that, that's contemplated? Those will have to be piped?
That's part of the condition number five, oh, sorry, condition number two and four.
And are these conditions, are these conditions required to be done prior to issuing building permits?
It says concurrently with the development of the onsite development.
So, how are the people supposed to get in and out of there if there are construction trucks going?
The residents, the, to the south, it would have to be coordinated in order to allow the.
That doesn't seem right. It seems like the roadway should be improved before you allow them to, to start construction so the people can get in and out?
Currently, it says that the construction for the drainage improvements shall be concurrent with the paving and drainage improvements of the site. And then, the same with condition number four is that it's concurrent with the paving and drainage improvements from the site. So, that's how it's currently written.
I don't think that's written properly. And I guess, as it relates to old military, where Orlando connects to Military Trail, that that area in the, every afternoon, the lights back up, or the traffic backs up from Okeechobee and prevents any egress or, or makes it very, very difficult to get out of Orlando or in fact, make a left turn onto Orlando from Military Trail. Have you all observed that?
I have not personally observed that. I don't know what the traffic study is. I don't know if you can speak to that?
We haven't observed that in the field.
So, we're going, the plan is to put more people trying to get out, in and out of there when you don't, you can't even get in and out of there?
There will be some impact from this development, yes.
You have any suggestions?
I don't believe, one solution could be putting a traffic light, but this traffic light will be too close to the community drive signal and most likely, this will not even meet standards for a traffic signal from the side street.
From the side street, but what about, what about the cross-street?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
I mean, the cross-street comes to a dead stop, right? They're just stopped there waiting.
Correct. But the standards are mostly based on the cross-street traffic, side-street traffic, but that's not probably heavy enough to require a signal there.
All right. Thank you.
With respect to the Vice Mayor's question about the build-out of those roads, would the CO be issued before those roads are completely built out?
No, no COs can be issued until the improvements are done.
Okay, so there won't be anybody living there. They might start construction, but no additional vehicles would be allowed until the CO. Presumably, then that would all be taken care of as the, at least what's been designed.
Correct, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Let's go do our disclosures, get those out of the way and then we'll do our public comments. I'm going to go from right to left. Commissioner Marino?
Okay, I have received, the only thing I've done is received emails from residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
I did not meet with anyone but did receive correspondence.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I've, I think I've had a verbal communication, but I'm waiting for Vice Mayor Weiss's, just to make sure that I confirm it.
We'll let you append.
I did receive correspondence.
Very good. Commissioner Sacks?
Hi, Mayor. And I have received and filed emails with regard to this issue.
Very good. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to help Commissioner Bernard with?
Let me see if I can help Commissioner Bernard. I had a phone conversation with the applicant, Mr. Dave Prasad. I spoke and met with Carol Kuzmic, Kathy Roberson and a number of residents. I received email correspondence. I had a site visit on 5/23/2022 with Kathy and a group of area residents. And my staff attended a neighborhood meeting on 6/10/2022.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Bernard, did you want to append?
Yes, I think I've had a verbal communication with Carol Kuzmic and I did a site visit two or three years ago, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And you know, there's a welcome mat in front of my office. I don't know why nobody wanted to come and see me, but I had no verbal communications, but I did get a couple of emails and they are filed and available for inspection. Okay, let's go ahead and have our public comment. I will ask you to come forward when you're called. You will have three minutes. You don't have to take all three of them.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Chesterfield Roper opposes it but does not wish to speak. Our first speaking member of the public will be Kathy Roberson, followed by Siobhan Roper.
Good morning. First, I would just want to add real quick before my time starts. We want to make sure that Old Military is improved from Orlando south to Old Military Trail as well. Forty percent of the traffic's going to be on that narrow-ditched culvert road on that narrow street. So, not just up to Orlando, but to continue down. Okay, I apologize. Good morning, Mr. Rutter, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Roberson and I have lived on Badger Avenue since 1988. I, along with my neighbors, are here from the Old Trail community, a community close to 100 years old and consists of approximately 12 streets and over 200 single-family homes. We are here today to share our concerns regarding the Evergreen Townhouse project proposed to be located within our neighborhood. We would like to submit a petition for receipt and file, which contains over 80 signatures of our neighbors along with comments that unfortunately cannot be here today because of work. After the postponement, we did have a neighborhood meeting with the county representatives and the developer. We recognize that the property owner has the right to develop the 4.52 property, which allows for five units per acre, and we understand that a total of 23 units can be built on that site by right. We understand that. What we are opposed to is the granting of a Class A conditional use approval for the additional 17 units, which will result in a total of 40 units within seven two-story buildings. We are respectively requesting the Board of Commissioners to consider the impact that this development will have on our small community. I would like to thank Mr. Hummerix, Mr. Tate, your wonderful OCR team for providing our meeting resources. It's been incredible. Yes, Commissioner Bernard, we met. You got to see firsthand our single-family homes in our neighborhood. Thank you for that. In closing, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor for responding to our email invitation to come out to visit this proposed site and see firsthand your constituents' concerns. You did get to witness firsthand, it was as if we had paid all the trucks and all the residents to come and go and come and go, but between 9:30 and 10:00, he actually got to witness the delivery trucks, people walking, people trying to drive and get through. So, you got to see firsthand and that area was within 200 feet of this proposed only entrance in and out of this proposed project. I want to thank you for your time and I'd like to introduce you to Siobhan. I would like to submit this for receipt and.
Could you give us to our public information people? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's receipt and file.
Good morning. My name is Siobhan Roper and I live on Alberta Avenue, which is two minutes away from this proposed project. On page 5.3C of the staff report, it indicates that the surrounding, the compatibility with the surrounding use indicates the proposed development is consistent with the existing multifamily development adjacent to the west and the residential development to the south of the Evergreen project. However, the report failed to acknowledge that, that, the report failed to acknowledge the tennis club multifamily development that is located to the west and the Allure Residential Development that's located to the south does not have any connection to our community. Instead, the proposed project will abut against a single-family resident named Miss Kitty, who has been there for over 50 years. Currently, the traffic noise she has is limited to the garbage truck and the delivery vans that venture down that street as there is no exit to the north side. Therefore, no one goes down there. She will bear 100% impact of the Evergreen project while the project is being completed and after it's completed with the residents passing and guests. That is accounted for 43 parking spaces additionally for guests. While the site directly abuts the church on the south, we want to know, we want you to know that all the properties within the community south of this project are single-family homes. This is significant, given that our community is the only egress and ingress to this project development. Additionally, the current walk-up park that attracts many families in the community, even though it's walk-up, they still drive to the park and there is no parking space for the, at the park. So, what they do is park on Old Military Trail on the side. And this causes more buildup of vehicles when passing. So, now they're on the side of the road, partially in the grass and then you have vehicles coming to and from the residents on the right and the mobile community on the right. This prevents, this sometime prevents the residents themselves from even backing out or going into their driveways as it's blocked up by people parking along the side of the park. While we understand that the 23 units will be built, an additional 17 is just too many to tack on to this project. So, we would like you to think about Miss Kitty and her surroundings, her quality of life, her safety and her security when considering to approve these additional 17 units.
Thank you very much for your comments.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Roper. Following Curtis, are Curtis Frida?
Curtis.
Following Curtis, we'll have Carol Kuzmic and then our last speaker will be Brian Black.
Good morning, Commissioners and thank you, Mr. Vice President, for all your traffic concerns of our community. My name is Curtis Fritz and I live on 4577 Steel Street. It's just south of Orlando on Old Military Trail. And I'd just like to mention that the ADT analysis for Old Military Trail shows that the community has an average of 194 trips per day in our community. The proposed new apartments will create an additional 344 trips per day total, an increase of almost 150% in our neighborhood. Old Military Trail consists of single-family and duplex homes. We have three apartment complexes in the area, but none of their traffic impacts our area of Old Military Trail. The Evergreen Apartments' traffic will have to flow directly through Old Trail community. The exit to Main Road, which is great safety concern to us. Our neighborhood has a large community of pedestrian traffic walking along Old Military Trail, kids during the day and our elderly at night. There is no sidewalks on Old Military Trail for our community to walk to our walk-up park. An increase of 60% traffic going out of Orlando, while the other 40% will try to funnel out Old Military Trail to Military. The new apartment complex will only have to fix up to Orlando, the sidewalks and then out to Military Trail. They have, but they have forgotten the kids and the elderly that would be greatly affected by the 40% traffic going out Old Military Trail. This will be a huge danger to our community without sidewalks for the pedestrian traffic, also the proper drainage and lighting to continue on Old Military Trail also and all the way out to Military. This is not even considering the width of the roadway that does not have enough room for two vehicles to pass each other without one having to pass through the grass. For the safety of the Old Trail community, I ask you to consider the danger of the Evergreen Apartments' flow of traffic without the proper infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi. Thank you, Curtis. And hello, good morning. My name is Carol Kuzmic. I'll get so nervous, but I'm going to do my best. I, I've lived at 2596 Old Military Trail since 1977. My husband since 1957. I have seen firsthand how my little community has grown exponentially over the last 20 years and especially after the last five years. We are a mixed group, all ages, all ethnicities, young families. Lots of us work, some are retired, some stay-at-home moms, some reconsider as elderly. I'm going to get my act together here. We are the two representation of a small family neighborhood. In your conditions for this project, you mentioned consistency with the plan, compatibility, design, environmental impact, but nowhere a safety mentioned. And the potential that we put in, you will see over and over again. Try and, too much traffic, too much traffic for our kids, roads aren't wide enough, danger for my kids playing, potential hazard, neat sidewalks, the ditches need to be filled. We have two bus stops at Old Military, one on either side of the neighborhood and one inside the neighborhood. Tell me those children are not going to be impacted by the additional cars. The park brings our neighborhood together. Because it's a walk-up park, that's what people do all day. Kids, of course, are playing basketball. We have soccer. Elderly go down there to play cards. There's an exercise path. The park is only 600 feet from the entrance to the new development. The additional coming and going of the traffic is going to impact the safety of the lives. We need a four-way stop there. That's the visibility is minimal as you're walking home. I have five grandchildren, eight months, two and a half, 10, eight, 10 and 11, and they are the loves of my life. Their safety is all I care about. When we walk, we have scooters, bicycles, strollers, sometimes the dog. We are constantly looking behind us as we're walking down the street because if two cars are coming in, you cannot, you have to go into the swale. We are, our infrastructure hasn't improved in 20 years, but again, the growth of the new families has skyrocketed. My most memorable signature on the petition came from a mother on Orlando. She has four small children. They go to the park every day. She's already nervous about going and I asked her about her concerns. She said, "Keep my children safe." It gives me chills every time I say it. And now, two residential streets, our street, Old Military Trail in Orlando, are the entrance and exit, the only way that the, the people from Evergreen are going to come out. 194 cars is already dangerous. 344 additional cars every day is not only going to prove dangerous, detrimental to my community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Brian Black. I live at 2740 Old Military Trail. I'm about 300 feet south of the proposed project. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for lending their ears and their time to the Old Trail community. In times like these, it is important to feel seen and heard and we are grateful for the opportunity to voice our feelings and concerns. Our community is desirable because of the expectation of pedestrian access, access and leisure and we do not want to lose the status quo to unsafe situations. We believe that there are necessary upgrades to our infrastructure that are critical to the coexistence with our new neighbors. This includes things that they've said. Traffic, obviously, a big concern, but our pedestrians are the heart of our community and we need to make sure they're safe. So, sidewalks are important, but also, not proposed is the upgrade of Military Trail past Orlando to the south, which they say in the traffic study, 40% of the new community will use. So, whatever road conditions that need to be improved on Military north of Orlando need to be applied everywhere for the safety of our community, in my opinion. We also, we spoke about Kitty. We would like to request more privacy for her if this project does go through. They proposed a landscaping wall and we think it's necessary for her to have a division. She's enjoyed her privacy for, since 1970, since she's lived there, and we think that's important. Also, visibility. We have maybe one streetlight going north of Orlando and we think that needs to be addressed if this does need to go forth. And we just want to say to the developer that we hope that they conduct the project with minimal destabilization and maximum rejuvenation of the community that will serve as a gateway to Evergreen Townhomes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that's everybody who wished to speak. So, we're now going to take this for ourselves to discuss. Commissioner Sacks, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the residents for coming out because it shows faith in your county commissioners that you would come out and speak your mind about what's going on in your community. This is what it's all about. So, thank you. I know some of you had to take off of work or to make different arrangements for your family. And I want to thank Commissioner Weiss. I believe this is in your. And I wanna thank Commissioner Weiss, I believe this is in your, in your district, for going out to the site and seeing it and speaking to the resident, because it really eliminates the issue for the rest of us. And I think that this is grave concern to me about safety, safety for the people who live there, and safety for the families, and also the need for infrastructure. That's our job, to make sure that there is sufficient infrastructure before there's any further development. So it's, I think that's a, that's a big deal, that the roads are sufficiently large enough to accommodate more traffic, need for sidewalks, need for pathways, needs for more streetlights, only one streetlight in that area. So I just wanna take this moment, I don't know how I'm gonna vote, Mayor, but I do thank you, Commissioner Weiss, for going out there and making a real picture for us of what it's like, and for the neighbors to come out and speak. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Weiss, do you wanna speak now, or do you wanna wait until the end?
I'll wait.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do wanna add that I did have verbal communication with Kathy Roberson. I think Commissioner Weiss, through redistricting, this area is now represented by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss, and I used to represent that area. And, you know, having visited the area and seeing the concern for safety, you know, I think that this is too much, and, you know, the developer can do whatever they can do by a matter of right, but however, I don't see me supporting this item based on what's presenting in front of us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Marino, please. No applause. Thank you, Commissioner.
Staff, can you tell us where there are any stop signs at this point in time in the area, in the community?
If you give me a moment, I'll look at that.
That's fine. I mean, I was trying to do it on my GeoNav on my phone, but, you know, this is too small to do it. So if you could tell us where there are stop signs, I think that would help us understand.
The residents can tell us.
Okay.
I'm Kathy Roberson. I can tell you right now, on Old Military Trail, there is a stop sign as you're heading south at Orlando. As you're heading north on Old Military Trail, there is a stop sign at Orlando. We really should have a four-way stop sign, no matter what, no matter what, because it is a major issue right there. As you head south on Old Military Trail, to turn onto Old Military Trail, to go to Military Trail, there is a stop sign right there as well. Only a two-way stop sign on each side of Old Trail. So those are the stop signs that are in place at this time.
At a minimum, I would ask for a four-way stop sign, a four-way stop there. Engineering, I know you guys are probably, you have your own criteria of why you do things, but by, by right, they already have the opportunity to put twenty-four units there. We are in a housing crisis, we talk about that all the time, and this is an addition of seventeen units. I see the importance of the road improvement, that has been discussed, and that the developer is going to do, which is the widening of the road, putting in the sidewalk, improving drainage. Am I getting all that right? Okay. Because I have, I just wanna make sure, because we wanna make sure that the right information is getting out there. There happens to be a lot of times where the wrong information gets out there. But again, by right, they have the opportunity to put twenty-four units there, and if they did that, they would still have to improve the road, correct?
No.
That's correct.
Try again. This part of the subdivision variance was that they had to improve the roads.
But that's to have this, the, that's to have the forty units, not the...
I'd have to take a look at that.
Okay.
I don't know the answer. Sorry.
But the benefit here is, there is an unimproved road that is going to get improved and have a sidewalk.
It would have to meet the standards for access. So yes, there would be a standard that they would have to meet for access, and currently that road doesn't meet the standard for access.
So in order for me to support this, I have to make sure that that road meets the standard for access, has the sidewalk as it has in the plan here that has been already conditioned, correct?
Correct.
And I, I believe that you do need a four-way stop sign there, and maybe if there's, if there's a need and we can address it, if there are the need for additional stop signs, I think we should, we should look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. Commissioner Kernert?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the applicant for your professionalism and to the members of the community. On its surface, I thought the application made a lot of sense, including the density bonuses for workforce housing, and obviously, we're all very cognizant of the housing pressures and cost pressures that are present in our community. But one thing that I've said time and time again up here is, I'm not gonna dispose with the quality of life concerns and preservation of neighborhoods in the name of affordability, and that's a tough statement to make in public, but at the same time, people have, this is a proud neighborhood with a long history, and I think just by the nature of the project itself, the units that are entitled already will be helping to ease that, that workforce housing crisis and affordability crisis to some degree, and for that, I'm thankful. So I say all of that to say this, I appreciate all the diligence that Commissioner Bernard and Vice Mayor Weiss have put into this, and I'm going to adopt the position of Commissioner Bernard with, with respect to the excess units.
Hi, so I was gonna offer, depending if we, where we end up with some of these conditions, to, at the board's discretion, if they want to postpone, so we can potentially work out some more conditions, or some other conditions as to, as far as the timing goes with construction of the road and COs, et cetera, et cetera. So I was just gonna offer that to the board as various options to lessen the impacts.
Okay, let's see where we land. Commissioner Weiss, why don't you take a stab?
I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify. This site is fairly unique, because it has the RM zoning district with the MR5 future land use. Multifamily in itself requires additional approvals. So though they have twenty-three units because of the density in the MR5, multifamily in itself, to get the twenty-three units that the land use would allow, would still require a Class B conditional use to be approved by the zoning commission. So I just wanna put that out there as multifamily. If they did single-family and subdivided it, then it would be allowed through the subdivision process, but multifamily and twenty-three units is a Class B, which would require Board, zoning commission approval.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First off, I wanna, I want to thank the applicant for your willingness, when I requested that you consider a postponement at the last meeting, and I, I appreciate that, and I know the community really appreciated that, and your willingness to come together. I wanna thank the CCRT staff and our Parks Department. With that postponement, they set up a community meeting at the neighborhood park, parks set up a tent. My, my recollection of that day, there was a lot of rain and inclement weather, so delighted that they were able to, to get that put together and had planned in advance to do that, so that people could come together, hear about the project, and, and the applicant could hear the concerns of the neighborhood. So I, I just, I wanna get that out. And then lastly, to the neighborhood, you know, we had our first meeting, our first opportunity to meet back in May, and I, I mean, I really do appreciate the invitation and your willingness to help educate me as to the concerns you all had, and to be here today. And I know it's, it can be a bit nerve-wracking, if you, I mean, most of us don't have, don't come in front of government to speak directly to their electeds, and really do appreciate you all taking your time and understanding, you know, the, learning about the process and how this all comes together. And I, and I appreciate hearing from the, my comments, or the comments of my colleagues, and, and I agree. I mean, we, we are all trying to get more affordable workforce housing in our community. We, something we have worked on, but we've also talked about where and how we do that, where we increase density specifically for our affordable workforce housing, and the top, the things we've talked about, and with staff as well, is that we do it in a, in a place where we have the roadways, the transit systems, and the things that are in place to help foster that higher level of development. In this case, we're in a, we're in a, inside of a neighborhood that has potentially the opportunity to get out to a major, to major roadways, but that, that has not been pursued. And I believe in my discussions with the neighborhood was, if they could have, you know, have, didn't have the traffic coming through their neighborhood and had direct access, this was something that they had no issue with. But what we're, what we're left with is, in fact, increasing density and putting them on substandard roads. And I understand there's a condition in place to improve at least the roadways that are closest, but additionally, and as the neighbors have pointed out, a lot of the traffic does not go out Orlando, it continues down Old Military Trail, and that's not part of this. And it probably is economically not feasible to be included as a condition. I, I'm sort of disappointed, and if, if anything like this were to move forward, or any type of multifamily development is to move forward in this area, that the condition needs to be that the roadways, if there, the roadway improvements have to come before any development, because if you think about it, when you're developing a site, not only the work, the trucks that are delivering materials and so forth that block the entire roadways, you have a lot of workers, and they're also, and so at the same time, you're, you're creating this conflict between workers and the residents that are trying to, and these are very narrow streets, and in fact, if you look at, at the culverts south of Old Orlando, the culverts in some places are close to eight feet deep, and a vehicle going off into, into that, and the neighbors have told me how many times they've had to pull vehicles out of there. You know, it's, it's unfortunately occurs far too often because of how, in the past, we allowed development to happen without having the proper infrastructure to support it. And so I will not be supporting this additional density, you know, unless they were able to find a way to put this in place without, without coming in through the neighborhood.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. We're shorthanded today, which means a three-three vote would be a failure. I'm gonna suggest that if someone up here is ready to move to postpone, that we would take that as a possibility of trying to continue to work this. I don't see it going today, but you may not even get a motion to postpone. I'm gonna look around the table and see if I have a motion to postpone.
Mr. Mayor, I think we, just based on the discussions, I don't think there is, there's, it's not a three-three, this is probably four-two to, to deny this.
All right, then.
I'll move to deny.
All right, I have a motion to deny. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Sax, you are recognized.
May I make a statement, or is it a vote?
Yeah, 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 we're not voting yet, we just have the motions.
I'd like to, to listen carefully to the commissioner who is representing the people of that area. As a county commissioner, we represent all the people in the county, but it is up to the county commissioner who represents a particular area that I give great credibility to. And I agree with the Vice Mayor, whose district this is. And I don't need to reiterate all his arguments, but I will say this. As for me, I will not commit to, to promote any further development on, in an area where we do not have sufficient infrastructure, period. Once the infrastructure is in place, then we can talk about additional development, we can talk about other areas that, that we can develop, long lines of housing, which we all need. But until the infrastructure is in place for the people who live there, I will not support any further development, and I respect the argument made by Vice Mayor Weiss with regard to this area, that he represents and to the people who came out. So my vote would be a no. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that. Our council wishes to add his assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification, in the quasi-judicial context, a tie vote actually results in a continuation of the item to the next hearing. Aside from that, if there is a vote for denial, because your advisory boards and staff have both recommended approval, it'd be helpful for the record to identify which standards haven't been satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. We'll, we'll get to that in a second. Let's let Commissioner Kernert speak, then Commissioner Marino.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. If we could, if I could just clarify or get some clarification, obviously, I've expressed my intent to, to deny the additional density through the workforce housing bonus, but if we deny both of these motions, is, is the rest of the project still protected to move forward? Assuming they wanted to?
What would the rest of the project be?
What they're entitled, I think twenty-four units.
If they wanted to move forward with what is allowed by the current future land use, the MR5, and it'd be twenty-three units, they have to seek a Class B conditional use, and that would be approved by the zoning commission, or the decision.
It doesn't come back to the board? But we're not, there's no unintended consequences by denying these two motions?
Correct. The, the first, the first motion, which is to allow more than twenty-four, is, is almost contingent on the second motion as well, because the second motion is giving you the number over the twenty-four. So you deny them both.
And I would add that it, depending on whether you deny it with or without prejudice, it could, they could come back tomorrow with another application, and if it was with prejudice, they would have to wait a year to come back with something substantially similar to this.
Well, I'll let the maker of the motion decide on the issue of prejudice, but I will be voting yes on the motions.
Okay. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. Back to the question of if they build twenty-four units, who's responsible, is it, do they have a responsibility to improve the roadway, and if so, whose responsibility is it?
It will be the applicant's responsibility to improve the roadway.
So whether, whether it gets done as twenty-four or as forty, they, the applicant still have to spend one point six million to improve the roadway and add sidewalks?
Yeah, whatever that number may be, yes, ma'am, they would still have to improve the roadways.
Thank you.
I'll make the last comment, and then we'll go back to the maker of the motion to find out if it's gonna be with or without prejudice. Obviously, this is gonna fail. I'm personally of a mind to approve this, because I feel that, you know, we're, we're talking a lot about workforce housing, we're talking about the need for it. I've read the staff report, where they're saying that the proposal will serve as an additional affordable housing for residents of Palm Beach County. It's in close proximity to institutional and commercial development that would serve the existing proposed residents. They see compatibility, they see it's logical to put it in this place, logical, orderly, and timely development pattern, but I understand my colleagues' concerns, and I certainly have no problem with the way this is going, other than to say that we've gotta find a way of getting additional housing out there. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna put a two-hundred-million-dollar bond issue in front of our residents, asking them to trust us to solve a problem, and we don't seem to be able to solve it. So Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor, why don't you make your motion again and let us know if it's with or without prejudice?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me, I thank you for your comments. I will remind our board, recently in District Two, we approved seven hundred new units off of, just off of Okeechobee. Twenty-five percent of them are workforce affordable housing units, and, you know, done in, in the, done in a way that is compatible. I would say, in this case, I, the denial was based on adequate public facilities, or in this case, it would be inadequate, so I don't find that it meets that standard. And I would want to do this with prejudice, and, and encourage the applicant to go back and look at, look at this and see how they might be, best be able to develop this property. look at this and see how they might best be able to develop this property.
Okay. So again, with prejudice, that means that this will not come back for a year?
Correct.
Okay. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, let's do a roll call.
This motion is to deny.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes, will be to deny.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
To deny. Yes.
Commissioner Kerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
No.
Commissioner McKinley?
Do you need to stop the vote?
Yeah, I think it'd probably be best. Because there are two different motions, and each of them has different standards of approval, it just came to my attention that they're both for conditional uses, but the second conditional use actually has different standards of approval for the workforce housing. So this first motion, the vote you're currently doing, would be for the conditional use for the 24-plus multifamily units. And the second motion would be for the workforce housing density bonus. And the density bonus is the one that has different standards of approval.
Okay. So we are only moving right now, and I'm going to have the vote started again, just so we have clarification where we are. The motion is to deny the resolution approving the Class A conditional use to allow over 24 multifamily units in a multifamily residential RM zoning district, subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in Exhibit C1. Vice Mayor Weiss has made the motion to deny with prejudice, and Commissioner Bernard has made the second motion. So we're going to call that vote again, and it's going to be a roll call.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerner?
Yes, based upon the findings as stated by Vice Mayor Weiss.
Commissioner Marino?
No.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Weinroth?
No.
All right. We'll show that as having been denied by a vote of 4 to 2. Now we're going to go on to the second one, which was a motion to deny a resolution approving a Class A conditional use to allow workforce housing density bonus, rating the 50%, subject to the conditions of approval indicated in Exhibit C2. This motion is being made by Vice Mayor Weiss. Would you please just give the predicate?
Yes. I am moving to deny this item based on the potential impact of the proposed density bonus.
Second.
Okay. I have Commissioner Bernard making a second. Seeing no further discussion, we'll have a second roll call.
Commissioner Kerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
No.
Commissioner McKinley? Commissioner Sacks?
Yes, based on the recommendation of the district commissioner, Vice Weiss.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Weinroth?
No.
Okay. The vote is to deny by a vote of 4 to 2. That is with prejudice, so this cannot be brought back for a year. Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate everybody's comments, and we certainly, I think we've demonstrated, this body heard you. All right. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And I hope I'm not preempting anyone's desire to have a presentation on Agenda Item 8, but if there is no such desire, I would make a motion to approve on first reading the request for permission to advertise on L8.
I have Vice Mayor Weiss seconding you. I don't see anybody racing to say they need a presentation. I'll call a vote. All in favor, all opposed. Show that as approved, 6 to 0.
And then, Mayor, if I may, on Agenda Item 9, again, I'd make a motion to approve on preliminary reading.
Wait a minute. Before we do that, let me just say that we're recessing as the Board of County Commissioners, and we are reconvening as the Environmental Control Board. Your motion is now in order.
Thank you. As an Environmental Control Board Commissioner, I'll make a motion on L9 to approve, request permission to advertise for the ZONE BCC hearing on July 28, 2022.
One, two, three, four. Okay. We're still here with four. Okay. I have a second by Commissioner Marino. All in favor, all opposed. Show that as approved, 4 to 0. Okay. We're now going to recess as Environmental Control Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. All right. Where are we? Got to change my hats.
We're now on comments.
All right. So we postponed 10. That's been postponed until the 12th. Was that it?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. I think we're almost done. All right. Let's take comments. Purchasing, department update, engineering update. County Attorney, got anything to say?
I've said enough, sir.
(laughing) Zoning Director?
No comment.
Planning Director?
No comment.
Executive Director?
No comment.
But you pushed your button.
He doesn't know how to turn it off.
He doesn't know how to turn it off.[1360.21][1360.21](laughing) Had to give him a lesson. Okay. Assistant County Administrator?
Nothing.
All right. So now it's time for Commissioner comments. I'll go from right to left. Commissioner Marino?
I'm sorry that the folks in the audience have left, but I just wanted to say thank you because it does show that the commissioners are listening to them and that is the correct process. Whether we agree or not is another story, but we have listened, and I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate staff for everything that they do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. The Vice Mayor is obviously having a conversation with the residents. Commissioner Sacks, we certainly missed you up here.
(laughing) Thank you. Well, I want to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to miss a couple of meetings. And you can see that you went very well even without me. The county runs smoothly. But I just want to note that the trip to Israel was incredible, and it is impressive how well the country is doing, especially in terms of agriculture. I learned a lot. I met with a couple of the directors in Israel with regard to their agricultural production. And I found it very interesting. But as always, it's good to be back in the USA.
We're, again, happy to have you back. I hope you left a prayer in the wall there, something good to, helpful for our county.
Actually, I did. And I heard, Mayor, that you can't tell anybody what you wrote.
Okay. Well, then, don't tell us.
So it's a secret, but I'm sure that we won't have any more hurricanes, I'm sure.
Okay. That was Charlie Crist. You put that one in the wall. Commissioner Bernard?
Just want to say thank you to staff for all of your hard work. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment is that the mayor had made a comment recently regarding the Knesset being dissolved and the parliament being dissolved, and that you also being there at the same time.
And Commissioner Sacks being there. Now, we're not blaming you.
So we were wondering if you made any trips to the Knesset.
Actually, if I may, actually, I did. And I, right now, am brokering a peace agreement between all the different elements.
No doubts, Mayor.
Did you have a meeting with BB?
We think we have tough politics in this country. We have no idea what they go through. But in the meantime, the good news is that our first grandson had bar mitzvah.
Awesome.
And masada. So that is...
As we say in the old country, mazel tov.
That's right.
Mazel tov. So no other comments, Mayor, except that certainly it is a very tough, very tough country and tough people there. So God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. Vice Mayor, I know you just came back from talking to your constituents. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No. I just, I want to thank staff. I want to thank this board for listening closely to this issue and the impact. And as I said earlier, we know we have a need for additional housing. And I think this property, and the community understands that that property is going to get developed. But we need to do it in a way to minimize the impact, especially when you're going inside of a neighborhood. So I'd encourage staff, as these projects come forward, to really, you know, look at that impact. It's different, and we, as they mentioned, you know, we have the Alora that sits right, you know, right adjacent to them and against them, the tennis club. And, you know, they have the ability to get in and out of there. This, and this particular, and if you go out and you see Old Military Trail, at some point, we're going to have to, I mean, that does, if we're going to develop back in there, and there are multiple parcels back in there in that church property, I mean, at some point may, you know, want to do something differently with that, is to how do we do this inside of a neighborhood in a way that the impact, it doesn't fall in a way that's really disruptive to the existing community. But with that, those are my comments. I appreciate everybody taking the time to listen carefully on it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'm certainly not unmindful of those pressures. I think the residents here today were benefited by redistricting. They sort of got two district commissioners today. So that they were beating up on one, and then they started on the second. So I think that that inured to their benefit. Look, I am not going to say that I didn't have a feeling that these residents needed to be heard. And we have a balance here that we have to figure out. And we know that that's a difficult thing, that we're trying to deal with. I mean, the headlines are replete with stories about the fact that housing is just getting too expensive for people to even think about affording anymore. There's not enough affordable workforce housing. We have committed to putting something on the ballot with respect to that in November in your absence, Commissioner. We approved 4 to 2 to put that on the ballot. So, you know, this is not going away, and we've got to figure out a way of doing this without impacting our current neighbors adversely. And it's going to be a delicate job. So we'll get this done. As you know, I sent around an email or a memo and indicated that I have been approached by an individual who is in the business of recycling textiles. And I know that this is a sore subject for some because you see the unsightly bins out along the road. And I am certainly not an advocate for allowing that to exist. But I would like to see if we can't have staff investigate the possibility of allowing HOAs that are gated to make the decision for themselves whether they want to allow to have those bins placed within their communities so that textiles could be recycled. And that would be an opportunity for, again, repurposing these items. So if it's not objected, I'm going to ask Mr. Rutter to take it under advisement and see if this is something he can bring back at a later date. Seeing no objection, I thank you for your willingness to at least open up the discussion on this. And I thank you all for your attention today. It's 11:15. I think it's time to go home. We are adjourned.